I'd like to call the Riverside Township Board and Trustees a meeting for January 14th, 2014, to order. Jan, would you please lead us in a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Present.
Trustee Hartler?
Here.
Trustee Gaisman?
Here.
Trustee Kowalski?
Here.
Supervisor Tusha?
Here.
Let the record know Clark Blough is also in attendance.
Do I hear approval of the minutes of December 10th, 2013 board meeting?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Communications.
We received a thank you note from the $300 grant that we gave to the Daniel J. Corcoran School. They sent us a picture and a real nice The Girl Scout trip. And it was a $300 grant to buy books for the children. So they sent a nice note and a picture if you want to look at that. We received an invitation to the Bollywood Ball. It's on Saturday, the 25th, at the Weston Hotel. It's from Pillars. And I believe the cost is...
High.
Yes, very high. I can't find it or locate it.
I think it's on the...
$175 per person.
Oh.
So I don't know if anybody would be interested in that, but if you want to see the invitation, I will show it to you. And that's it.
Okay.
Oh, wait. We did also receive another thank you note, I apologize, from Aging Care Connections for their thanking us for our $6,000 grant. And that is the end of it. I apologize.
No problem. That's Communications. No visitors for visitors' remarks. Supervisors' what? Somebody say something? Echo. Supervisors' report. I'm going to refer that to Mary Robb under Trustees' reports.
Okay, we're moving right along on our speaker event with Marguerite Liederman-Mishkin. It's Sunday, February 9th, and 2:00. And the mission is to bring a non-perishable food item to donate to the food pantry. I... We're going to put these flyers out in the windows around town, and we'll have some on the table. And I spoke with Bob Leck today at the North Riverside Library. He's putting one up. I announced it at Lions Club today. I'll go over and talk to the Riverside Library. The cost for an ad for a fourth of a page, which would be this size, it's $125 a week. So we need the ad for two weeks. And they'll also post it on their website for $25 more. We can get like 10,000 hits on it. So...
I don't remember. What did we budget?
300.
300. So you're talking 250 already?
Right, for the ad, and then 25 for the website.
And then for coffee and treats and stuff like that, you've got to remember.
Right, yeah. So, well, maybe we shouldn't do the website then, so we have $50 for the coffee and the treats?
Yeah. That's what I'm thinking.
Okay. So, that's it, I think. And then, oh, actually, and for all the trustees who are coming to this and their guests, I'm having a little reception at my home at 1:45 Berry Point afterwards. You're all invited to.
This was already budgeted, so you already have the funds for this then, right? Or do we have the vote on this? No? We already budgeted for it?
Already voted.
Okay, good. So you're all set? Good.
Anything else?
When will the first, when will these start going up? Soon, right?
Wait, what ad?
Will they start going up, the posters?
Oh, jeez.
Oh, the posters? Probably all do some this weekend, and some the next weekend, to get them up.
Today is the 14th. That's about a month.
Nice looking poster.
Thanks. And, yeah, you know, thanks to Andrew. He did this.
Okay. In your opinion, I think you review the mental health board report meeting. No old business?
Oh, wait. I have old business. Ann, have you talked about doing a shredding thing, a recycling shredding thing? Is there any update on that?
I haven't done anything at this point.
Oh, good.
For what? For shredding what?
Well, documents.
Waste, anybody's waste.
Riverside Bank does that once a year.
Right, I know. But, you know, we talked about maybe doing it, an event here, once or twice a year, and maybe expanding it to more than just paper, or maybe doing prescription drugs, you know, because you can't just put those in the recycling or garbage. So I wasn't sure if people were keen on it when I talked about it.
The only thing I'm not keen on is prescription drugs, because I remember looking into that a while back, about putting prescription drugs. I mean, this, were you going to leave it here and then somebody could come in and break it in? Did you have to come into the office between 9:00 and 3:00?
Oh, no, 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 no. The idea would be that everything would be delivered that day.
Sure, they bring it?
They bring it the day.
Right.
Okay.
No storing here, nothing.
Just like they do the shredding at the bank, and you go, you can wait for it to go in there and watch it, too.
Right, 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 right.
And then also, like, if we expanded it to kind of a whole recycling event, you know, we can get bicycles and shredding and electronic and a paint drop off. And if we used the parking lot in North Riverside or the swim club parking lot, people just, you know, drive in, drop off their stuff. And then the companies that do the recycling take it away that day.
We have electronics recycling.
We do.
We have, and Riverside has electronics.
Yeah, I'm over there.
We do. And Sedlin does electronics recycling, too.
Oh, does it?
So I don't know if I'd worry about electronics, because people from Riverside certainly, well, I mean, there's more than Riverside.
I've been there a couple of times.
Yeah.
Well, look into it, Ann. What companies, you know, find out what companies have, you know, I could call Andrew, you can call, find out what the price is or whatever, you know, find out the name of these companies and what they're for then, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And bicycles, working bikes, which is an organization in the city, will take all your old bikes, no matter what condition, and they take them to their warehouse in the city, and they refurbish them, and they send a lot to Africa and New Orleans for people to use for transportation.
Okay.
And they'll come out at no charge.
And that's the name of the company?
It's working bikes.
Yeah, sometime give it to Ann.
Okay.
Just as a matter of, there's a place on the Grange Road that does that, too, in downtown McGrange. They take old bikes and fix them up and stuff. Because I brought, I brought our old bikes over there a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
I'll get the name and give it to Ann and...
Well, I'll have to ask Linda what it is, yeah.
I can't hear you, Jan.
I'll have to ask Linda. She knew it, because she owns by the library. Okay, I'll find out.
Did you have something, Mary Robb, since you brought it up?
Of working bikes?
No, 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 just on the recycling.
Oh, no, I just think it's a great event.
Okay, okay.
I think it'd be a good, you know...
Thing to offer.
A good thing for the township to do.
Okay.
I think this is the point, that I think the bike thing that you're talking about, you said they would come out here for nothing, right?
Right.
And they would take it. The one on the Grange, you have to bring it there. So that might be a better idea.
Yeah, it's great. When my company did it on a Saturday in Roselle, we got 40 foot bikes.
Wow.
In about three hours.
Yeah. I think it might be better if they don't charge for them to come in.
Right.
I think that's a good idea.
So as long as, you know, we have a date, and they'll come any day of the week, too.
It'd be kind of warm.
Yeah, we did it on a Saturday morning in April.
July.
So, you know, when people were crying, I thought people were doing spring cleaning for their garage.
Spring cleaning, yes.
Yeah.
Spring cleaning.
Okay.
Wait, my other piece of old business is the scholarship thing. I kind of wrote up a requirement and the application for just, I know we were waiting kind of to call back from an attorney. Two pieces.
And he hasn't called back. I don't know where we're actually at with...
Do we remember just when?
Oh, wait, we need one more. Do you have one more, or no?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I just wrote this up. Just, it's very, very basic. It's very simple. And...
What I can do is I can fax this to Richard and see what he thinks.
Okay, or I can send it to you electronically also.
Yeah.
It's very simple, you know, just a quick essay on why they want to get involved in government, or, and then proof of residency and transcripts and a letter of recommendation.
Okay.
So, and I'm, if anybody has any, after they review this, if anybody has any corrections, adjustments, suggestions, please let me know.
Okay.
Okay.
One comment. I was on the education committee for township officials of Illinois for years, and we did scholarships every year. And the essay that they had to write was on township government.
On township government, okay.
Well, we had that one, where the kids had to do the painting or whatever, remember?
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
We can make the essay on whatever we want. So, you know, we can put township...
Okay, you know, we'll look into it.
Okay.
Okay, on your new business. You'll see, we've got the budget for 2013, 14 in there. We're not going to go through that. That's just in there for you guys to look at and make changes to whatever line item you think should be changed. And we'll review that next month, okay?
Well, in the past, we've always done a special meeting just to review the budget, to kind of go through and draft, draft it. You don't want to do that this time?
No, I mean, everybody, yeah, February, we've got 60, oh, that's before March 1st. We've got, I'm trying to think of it. We would have to have one, wouldn't we?
Well, you need the 30 day, if you're planning to adopt it in the April meeting, which is April the 8th.
Right.
You have to have 30 days to have it on, you know, public viewing. So that, and our March meeting is the 11th, 14...
So that's why I got it here. We figure we can go February, May?
We'd have to adopt a draft in February, because between the March meeting and April the 8th, there aren't 30 days.
Everybody give me a date that they're open, not now, this week, and I'll correlate a date for a special meeting for the budget.
What month are we talking about for the special meeting?
What, Jan?
What month are we talking about for the special meeting?
February.
January.
This month?
Yeah.
February, I should... It would be nice, though, if we had January financials, because right now, I mean, if we do it soon, all we're going to have is what we have today, and that's December.
Yeah.
And that's three months, you know, that we're open on the financials.
That was always the problem. We always had.
Well, and it's going to be, I think it's even tighter this year. Last year, because the election was last year, remember, the April meeting was later, so we had a little bit more flexibility. But this year, it's on the 8th. So, I don't know, is there...
Are you suggesting after February 8th, we should have a special meeting? Because that way, we'll only be one, one month off.
Well, the February meeting, our February meeting is the 11th, is the 11th. But when could we get the financials for January, do you suppose? I mean, usually Betty doesn't get them to us until...
Well, until the Friday before the meeting. Yeah, that's just it.
That's too late.
Yeah.
To then have some, you know...
Yeah, if we've got to approve at the February meeting...
It's like a tentative, a tentative, be a tentative budget. And then you approve, you know, the final you're going to do at the April.
In April.
Presumably the April meeting. But you want to do something tentative, because you want to put something on, you know, display for the public. So do you think she might be able to...
I'll ask.
Give us something a little more quickly next?
Yeah, I'll ask. And that's for February 11th, before February 11th meeting?
Well, we'd want to have it before February 11th, hopefully. So if we were going to sit down together in a special meeting and just go through it, having at least up through January's financials, you know, to look at, we're still, we have two months off. I was even thinking maybe we shouldn't adopt it until May, but, you know, it's always better to have a working budget when your year is already started.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if federal government doesn't...
I know, but we're not in a federal government here.
If the federal government doesn't...
You're trying to, you're in the county, aren't you?
They never have a working budget.
Well, we should do it. Oh, my God, we'd be thrown in jail.
I mean, I suppose, you know, we could just do it at the February 11th meeting. But, you know, it's always nice to be able to sit down and go line by line item and, you know, talk about it.
I don't think last year we wanted to do line by line. That's why I'm suggesting people make their line, line item changes.
Well, I mean...
Well, let's see if we can get it before the January.
Well, it's basically the same thing.
Right, and then you can say, okay, does anybody have anything other revenues?
Right, yeah.
But I guess our first step is to see if we can get that from Betty before the January financials.
Right. And then I'll email or call everybody and say, hey, we're having a special meeting for the budget on such and such date.
Or at least we have it before enough in time before the February 11th meeting that we can have them to look at and do our own estimates.
Right.
And then just do the review at the February 11th meeting, either way. But she would have to get that done a little more quickly than normally.
Okay.
All right.
Then you'll see Klein Hall's...
No, we got the lights.
Pardon?
The lights. Flagpole lights.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Flagpole. Yeah, Ann said that the, the light, which it is, those are the big Stalag 13 lights, remember Gary had put in many years ago?
Mm-hmm.
Well, this is Aaron to fix just that one light, $682.
You know, I was wondering, let's see where, what's he saying here? Compact fluorescent lights is what a light was he going to use. Well, I wondered if it was possible to do the LEDs, because these, I don't know if anybody's had any experience with these compact fluorescent lights, but we haven't had good experience with them. They don't really last too long.
Would you like me to?
And the new ones are LEDs, are supposed to be better. They're more expensive.
You want me to have Aaron give us a price on LED lights, a different, a smaller one?
What do you think? I mean, what does anybody think?
Yeah, I mean, he could even probably put it in closer to the building and have it shine up rather than the Stalag 13, I call.
Just see what he thinks.
I think that's worth it.
If we have the LED lights?
Pardon?
It's better for the environment, we have the LED lights?
Is it? Okay.
Well, then let's look into it.
I know they're a little more expensive, but I think they're supposed, of course, the compact fluorescents were supposed to last longer, too. But then, I don't think they do. But at least that's not our experience.
Okay.
But at least see what he says.
Yeah.
And how much it would add to the cost.
Yeah, I mean, you know, there's no rush, really. I mean, you know, but he'll do both, both sides, so they, you know, you don't have one Stalag 13 and the other LED.
Right, both sides of the sidewalk, you're talking about, yeah. I also was wondering, I mean, since that's village property, I mean...
I probably have to go through...
You probably should let them know.
Preservation.
Well, or at least check with...
No, I would probably, well...
Make, let them know.
Say by, like by like, but this is going to be different than like by like. So I'm going to have to go through the preservation.
Because I think they were pretty fussy about what they wanted when we put those in to begin with, so, you know.
They're not paying for it, but they're fussy about what goes in.
Okay.
Do you want to hold off on this then, and see, he may give us a new estimate?
Yes, that's what I thought we were going to do.
What, Jan?
That's what I thought we were going to do, is to look into the LED, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the village.
Well, Rich will take care of that.
Yeah.
Okay, now Klein Hall. Do I hear a motion to accept Klein Hall's audit proposal?
No.
Do I hear a second?
No.
I'll second it. Any questions, concerns?
I thought we were going back to Sheldon Fox.
Well, nobody said anything.
We talked about that.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we talked about it.
No, all that was said, we should do something. Nobody said, going back to any other company, we'd have to re-interview.
The topic was brought up and, and considered of changing auditors.
Yes.
I don't remember that.
Yeah, I was.
I did.
It was, but were we going to also interview others, or were we just, I mean, going to see if we could go back to Sheldon? I wa, I don't know.
I mean, yeah, I don't either, you know.
I thought everybody was...
All I remember is Wayne saying we should, you know, he doesn't like this company anymore, Klein Hall.
I brought up Sheldon Fox, and it seemed like it went favorably, or whatever. But I didn't hear anything about interviewing them, or...
Right.
This, this letter that Klein has written is indicative of the kind of work they do. They send a letter to us telling that they're ready to do the audit, and use three and a half pages to tell us that. I think that's...
Well, didn't they, didn't they?
Somebody up there running for office and...
Didn't they also ask for documents? We already gave them.
Yes, yes. They, they included them, and they will...
Right, exactly.
...submit the audit results, and we already provided for them.
Can we see?
The only reason it's in there is because nobody's really pointed out to go to Sheldon Fox or have interviews with other auditors.
Sheldon Fox, well, can we, can we...
I'll call Sheldon Fox.
Okay.
And have him give us a, you know...
Does that, what was that gentleman's name? Tracy that worked there? He was pretty good giving it.
Yeah, I liked him.
Yeah, he was good. He was good. Yes, let's do that.
I mean, they wouldn't be starting this until probably May.
Right.
Because the year doesn't end until March 31st, so...
Oh, we've got time.
Oh, yeah, yeah. June either, they probably would have.
Well, and they were really late getting this done this past year. I mean, really late.
There were some typos in their things.
Yeah.
Incorrect grammar, and that was one of our objectives, and the price, too.
I'll call Sheldon Fox.
Sheldon.
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 Pardon?
Sheldon.
S-E-L.
There's no H on there.
There's no H.
Sheldon.
Yeah.
Now Sheldon has another company, no.
What do I always call, I've always called it Sheldon for some reason. I don't know.
Yeah, give them a call.
Let's see if you can talk to Ed Tracy.
Yeah.
Ed Tracy, that's what it is.
All right.
Okay. American Cancer Relay for Life. Countryside Westchester, Brookfield Countryside Westchester. Do we want to buy, have a sponsorship, or...
I just think that there must be American Cancer Society organization more centrally located in Riverside Township than this one. This one is off to the west.
Yeah, you're right. I don't think there is, though.
Well, what's the Brookfield, what is the Brookfield one that...
Yeah, well, that's North Riverside.
No, they're merging, they're merging.
They're merging.
They're merging the Brookfield Countryside Westchester Relay for Life into one.
Yeah, but where is North Riverside? Who's representing North Riverside?
North Riverside doesn't have a Relay for Life. Brookfield's our closest one.
They don't have any cancer?
North Riverside, Mayor Scheck's walk, at a walk.
That's what it was. And that was, that was for his, for his wife.
For his wife, who died of breast cancer.
Correct.
2009 was the last time we gave to that.
Yeah, right.
So that, and then he donated, that was North Riverside's equivalent to a Relay for Life. And he donated that money to the American Cancer Society. So this is the only one, this covers our area. There are a lot of people from Riverside that do this.
A lot of people in Riverside that what?
There are a lot of people in Riverside that participate in this Relay for Life.
And Brookfield, and also North Riverside.
Yeah. I know they had combined the Brookfield and other communities a while back, and they'd have Ellen Park, sleepovers in tents and stuff. It'd go on all night long, Wayne.
Yeah, the Relays, you know, they camp out around the track that they're walking on.
Right.
And they walk all night.
So this is the best one for us to support?
Right.
Okay.
What was our support before?
$1,500. We did for several years for Brookfield.
What, Jan?
$1,500 to be granted for several years to Brookfield Relay for Life.
Well, make the motion.
All right, I'll make the motion that we grant the American Cancer Society Relay for Life with West Cook, any amount of $1,500.
I second. Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Hartler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Trustee Kowalski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusha?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, this is something we've got time, but I want you guys to think about. You get a chance, you take a look. And these chairs are for the chairs up in the auditorium. They're very similar to the, this type here, these banquet chairs that, on the first page here. They're heavy, okay? I was at North Riverside event at Christmas time. They're plastic chairs, very lightweight. They're not as fancy as these, but if anybody ever gets a chance, go over to North Riverside's gymnasium, take a look at the type of chairs there. Or do you, I'm thinking...
What, what incident brings this up?
Oh, the chairs are getting really raggedy.
Are they?
A lot of them are ripped and turned. That's why I say, there's no rush. Go upstairs sometime during an event and take a look at some of these chairs, okay? They're not cheap. Forty packers, you know, which are like the ones big, close to what we've got, are $1,099 or $27.50 a chair.
What?
Well, here's the first page. There's one circle that's $1,695.
I suggested also that we might talk to Ken Karatko. Remember, he donated these chairs? Gary Wilt was supervisor, and they all came from the Karatko Funeral Home.
He doesn't own that anymore.
He's with somebody else now, isn't he?
Yeah.
Pardon?
See, you...
I'm just, it's just a suggestion.
We need 40 to 50 chairs, just replacement chairs.
No, I understand that, but I thought it's just an avenue you might want to consider if they're going to replace their chairs or something at the funeral home. That's how we got these, you know, but...
We're looking, if we did 50, at $17, where it says this is $1,695.
Yeah.
We could do, I mean, that's $850. Have we looked at these to see if Costco carries anything like that?
See, the only problem with Costco is how am I going, how are you going to get them here?
Well, make several trips.
You what?
I haven't asked you.
As I'm looking, as I'm looking at these chairs, though, these are not folding chairs.
No, they're not folding chairs.
They're stack, we went up to stack.
I'm sorry, they're stackable.
But they say you get free dollies on orders of 50 or more, or in a free, free chair truck, which I guess is...
I'm just wondering how easy, how easy these are to work with and move around rather than having one that folds like these. Pardon?
That's why I was thinking, take a look at North Riverside sometime. And they're, they've got these blue plastic ones. They don't fold, they're stackable, they're very lightweight.
They are stackable?
Yes, they, yeah, they are. They're stackable, but they don't fold.
Did you know where they get them from?
Yeah, Penny told me. I can't remember.
Are they comfortable to sit in?
They're okay.
Yeah, they're okay to sit in. Yeah, they're okay to sit in. Call them up, maybe they'll donate them.
They just got those, she said.
What'd they do with the old ones?
Threw them away.
I don't like a black chair.
How much time are you going to spend on that?
No, but some of these are black.
Right, or brown or burgundy.
Yeah, that'd be okay.
Upstairs, another kind of brown and shirken.
Yeah.
So, just out of curiosity, why don't you like the black ones?
It's just...
Doesn't like what?
It's depressive. I like color.
Okay.
Says the man who's colorblind.
Were we going to order them or what?
No, no. I would like to have you take a look at the other stackable chairs in North Riverside because I prefer, I'm tossed, they're not as fancy as these look.
Yeah.
But with what's going on with what, they're a lot easier to handle and lift and move around. These things are really heavy.
Does it tell the weight of this chair in here?
It should.
Okay, do you know what the company is that sold them to North Riverside?
I can find that out.
All right.
I didn't see what the weight is.
Okay, let's look at it next month.
Okay.
What about Ivans?
I want to see if they're getting rid of their...
Yeah.
Oh, Ivans?
Ivans might be too, I'm sorry, what was his name?
Dave Marabachek.
Dave Marabachek, yeah. He was, he was my son's basketball coach when my son was that high. Maybe they'd be willing to do it too. Ivans, Mike Marabachek.
Dave.
Dave.
Dave Marabachek, oof.
Dave.
Dave Marabachek.
Well, I mean, I think he's still going to have the same issue with weight because the chairs that they have in funeral homes are going to be more like that.
Yeah.
You know, and then stacking.
But those are light.
But those aren't stackable.
No, they're folding.
No, they're folding.
They fold, that's true. So, fold is good. I don't know. I mean...
You know...
I don't know, it's worth a try.
The lightweight ones, if we're going to go 40, 50 of them, the color, it's blue or I'm sure you can get other colors besides, you know, they're not fancy, but they're easy to, and then we'd probably end up having to order eventually another 100 chairs like that, you know.
Because we don't want to do a lot of mixing and matching.
I'm just going to say, you want a color that's going to complement the...
The room.
The room.
Yeah, be comfortable.
You know, I don't think it would complement the room that way, but I mean, you know, I haven't found anything else that's nice, lightweight, because these things are, these things are heavy once you put five, six of them stacking on top. I mean, you know, we've tried moving them, John, you remember.
Exactly, and I was just going to say, you've got to think of our workers, too.
Yeah, I mean, we've got one guy with a questionable back.
You know, the thing with stacking chairs versus opposing to folding chairs, I mean, folding chairs, you have a two-step process. You have to take it off and unfold it. Where stacking, you just take it off. So, I don't know if that's going to make a difference to our workers.
I don't, I don't think it'd make too much difference except for the fact of storage.
And picking them up, too. I mean, on the folding chair, you can, if you're good, you can do two in each hand. On the ones that you can't fold, you're going to stack them and then what do you do with them, you know? Put them on a dolly or something, you know?
Right now upstairs, they're just stacked in rows, right? And we kind of pull them out, but there's not on, they're not on any dolly.
Yeah, we have about four, two rows of, well, four.
Okay.
And they're in the back of the, or basically the front of the building on this side, which, you know, we keep the extra chairs stacked up.
How many chairs are we interested in? Do we know?
Well, we need probably between 40 and 50, we should get it, you know, but if we're going to get something, Wayne, we should get all the matching. So, you're talking about another 100.
Sure. Okay, let me ask you a question. Right now, those folding chairs, those are folding chairs up there, correct?
No, they're stackable.
No.
They're stackable?
Yeah.
And those, we store under the stage?
No.
What goes under the stage? I thought we were taking chairs out from under the stage that time.
No, we're taking tables out from underneath the stage.
Tables, oh, okay.
Okay, we'll look at them and do it next month.
Yeah, you know, just keep it in mind, you know, that's all I'm bringing it up.
Right.
You know...
Do we have dollies for the chairs that are there?
We got one dolly, probably it came with the order, like, you know, Gary bought them years ago.
Yeah.
So, they've got to be, how many, 20 years old, they're at least, 18?
Yeah.
Well, he came in in 97.
Yeah, and he died, what, in 90?
He died in 2004.
That's 16 years ago.
Well, you know, it might not be a bad idea just to get the opinion of Bob and Lawrence and, you know, just see what they would think about anything.
Oh, yeah, that's no big deal.
You know, you know, tell them we're thinking about it and what would they recommend? Because they have to work with them.
Yeah.
I mean, just another opinion can't hurt.
Yeah.
But we want to please the audience.
Yeah.
Well, true, but we have them to talk about.
You've got to think of the workers, too. We're going to be handling these chairs.
I mean, you know, North Riverside are very light and easy and stackable and stuff like that compared to these things are, these things are heavy.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, you know, we've done it, and I think you've done it too, Wayne, haven't you?
Yep.
I mean, they're, they're pretty heavy.
Yes, they are.
Especially when you stack them five, six times.
And North Riverside are lighter, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yes, they are.
But they're not as fancy. That's just, you know, what do you give up either way, you know?
Okay.
Well, and these people drag across the room. I hear them sometimes.
Yeah.
When I just...
Yeah, it's right above us there, yeah.
And we want them to be comfortable.
Yeah. Well, that's why I say stop at North Riverside sometime, take a look at that type of chair. Anything I can tell you? Okay?
Look at North Riverside.
Any other visitors, pardon me, Wayne?
No, I just...
He was just making a notation.
Look at North Riverside chairs.
No visitors, approval of warrants.
Okay, I have a motion that the board approve and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant, January 2014, in the amount of $9,725.41, as presented to the board this 14th day of January 2014.
Second motion.
Second.
I did.
Oh. Any questions, concerns? Hearing on roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Hartler?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, next, a motion that the board ratify and approve payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. Utility warrant, January 2014, in the amount of $3,080.80. Funeral warrant, January 2014, in the amount of $15,975.20. Health warrant, January 2014, in the amount of $1,957.62. Monthly filings, January 2014, in the amount of $5,558.39. Grants, January 2014, in the amount of $4,814.86. General assistance warrant, January 2014, in the amount of $2,700. Township radio players warrant, January 2014, in the amount of $120. And food pantry warrant, January 2014, in the amount of $740.21, oh, sorry, excuse me, $740.27. All of the above is presented to the board this 14th day of January 2014.
Second motion.
Any questions, concerns?
I have one on the grant warrant. I could not find an invoice to back this up. I know we approved the expenditure, which was actually higher when we reviewed the grant request, but then there's a memo in there that they sent a revised invoice, and the amount's actually lower, somewhat lower, this $4,800 figure. And, but there's no invoice. I asked Margie about it.
Oh, you did already, okay.
Well, but I, she didn't come up with it, so I don't know if it's just not there. If you could get another, we should have it in the, in the file.
For sure.
As the backup.
Get another invoice.
For the corrected amount, the 4,814.86.
Wait, wait, slower. How much is it for?
4,814.86.
4,814...
8.86.
8.86, that's a new amount, right?
Right, and if, you know, you could always, I would think, get it from them, from North Riverside, from the police.
Any other questions, concerns? Hearing on roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Hartler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
No other comments from the supervisor. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.